Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. Where those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time for each person to be allowed three minutes of speaking time. So I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order Tuesday, March 26, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. And tonight, we're going to be closing in the honor of Roy Nix. And Mayor Pro Tim, you want to say some words about Roy?
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who are as old as I am, you might remember Roy. Roy passed away on the 18th of March just a few days ago, and he was living in Lake Havasu City, but he hadn't been there very, very long. He moved to this area in 1967. He was an Air Force brat of sorts, and his wife, who was also very active in Grand Terrace community situations, preceded him. His funeral service is going to be over at Montecito. Terrific guy, very dedicated, was involved in the Lions Club for a long time, and he lived here in Grand Terrace for 57 years. So longtime stalwart, terrific man. He was involved in the aerospace industry at GE, so quite an asset, a very precise individual, kind of the type of go-to guy that you would expect, and really miss him, so.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And Councilman Henderson, you have somebody you want to introduce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor and I attended Read Across America a few weeks ago at... The name of the school, Mayor? I forgot.
Terrace View.
Terrace View Elementary School. Thank you. And during one of my daily walks, I run across people that I see regularly, and one of those individuals is here tonight. His name is Ryan Halloran, and he mentioned that his children had participated in Read Across America and were interested in attending a city council meeting to see how things work. And so I'd like Ryan and his daughter Courtney, who's nine years old, and son Jonathan, who's seven years old, to stand briefly so that we can welcome them to the Grand Terrace City Council meeting. Ryan intimated to me that he might, in the future, have aspirations for the Grand Terrace City Council. I tried to discourage him from that, but I couldn't. So, welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So did you have to tell me Green Eggs and Ham, the mayor I am, and stuff like that? Okay. That's an old dad joke, anyway. Well, since we're introducing everybody, we have Scott Ward here from Don Rowell's office, supervisor's office. And if you have any county problems, just go see Scott. He would be willing to talk to you. Sounds like a commercial. Go see Scott, huh? All right. Okay, so invocation will be given by Pastor Rex at Center Point Church, my coworker here, and then I'll be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Would you bow in prayer with me this evening? Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight as those who are in charge of taking care of this city that you have so graciously bestowed and blessed, God. We ask that this time together would be fruitful. We ask that discussions would be civil and would have good outcomes. Lord, and we ask that you would continue to bless this city and its residents as we move forward, God. We thank you and we love you. In Jesus' name, amen.
No AB 2449 disclosure. Madam City Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Hesse.
Present.
Mayor Yuha Quan.
Thank you. Reorder an addition or removal of items from the agenda? Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Okay. Public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any items on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or asked of questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to question and rise during public comment and may request the matter be agendized for future meetings. And we do have public comment. We have comment also on certain agenda items, but just remember, just be respectful for the persons who are talking, you know, and no clapping or booing, because clapping and booing is the same way, but just, you know, be respectful. Okay? So Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
I'm Sarah Wilson.
Ms. Wilson. Ms. Wilson. Sarah Wilson.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Sarah Louise Wilson. I'm a resident of Grand Terrace. I stand before you with a plea for compassion and humanity in the face of ongoing conflict. I bring to your attention the urgent need for a permanent ceasefire in the Palestine-Israeli conflict modeled after the ceasefire agreement adopted by Pasadena City and Alhambra. I urge you to consider adding this critical issue to our next agenda as it holds the potential to save countless lives and prevent further devastation. It's essential to recognize that advocating for peace does not mean taking sides. Rather, it's about choosing the path of love and humanity. The relentless violence and aggression have inflicted unimaginable suffering and loss with far-reaching consequences for generations to come. We cannot ignore the human toll of this conflict, the innocent lives lost, the families shattered, and the communities torn apart. The recent escalation only has exacerbated the humanitarian crisis, leading to a famine in Palestine of unprecedented proportions. As residents of Grand Terrace have witnessed firsthand how global conflicts reverberate on a local level, it impacts vulnerable populations within our own community like the houseless vets. History has shown us time and time again that war and violence only breed more suffering and division. It's clear that a ceasefire is not just a moral imperative, it's a necessary step towards healing and reconciliation. We must ask ourselves, how can we justify the continued loss of innocent lives? How can we turn a blind eye to the suffering of our fellow human beings? We can agree that the killings must stop. Government newsoms call for an immediate ceasefire, while well-intended may fall short of addressing the root cause of the conflict. True peace can only be achieved through a genuine commitment to dialogue, understanding, and compassion. As a community, we must come together to say enough is enough. We must reject the cycle of violence and embrace the vision of peace built on love and solidarity. Love for our fellow human beings compels us to seek liberation for all, to end the cycle of violence, and to pave the way for a future of lasting peace. So let us heed the call of our shared humanity and work towards a future where dialogue replaces violence, where understanding triumphs over hatred, and where peace becomes a reality for all. I just wanted to bring up that the city of Alhambra today passed a resolution, and this is the wording. A resolution...
Go ahead.
Okay. A resolution of the city council of the city of Alhambra supporting a permanent bilateral ceasefire to the ongoing conflict and humanitarian crisis impacting Gaza and Israel. And Pasadena had the same wording, so... Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
God bless. Councilman Allen, go ahead.
Ms. Wilson. No, that's okay. I just wanted to say, thank you for your continued emphasis on this issue. It doesn't fall on deaf ears, but more than that, regardless of, like, everything that you stated is, I support and agree with, but most of all, I just want you to know that I admire you for your persistence in coming to each of our meetings and speaking on this issue so dear to your heart. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. And City Clerk, do we have anybody else?
No other public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and remove the special presentation, which is none. Consent calendar, the following consent calendar items will be expected to be routine and non-controversial and will be acted upon in the city council at one time without discussion. Any councilor, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the item from the consent calendar for discussion. Is there any requests to remove any items from the consent calendar?
Mayor, I don't want to remove item D3. However, there was a typographical error on that, and that has been corrected on the final minutes. It's D1. I had just Councilmember Allen seconding the motion for the special election, and it was actually Mayor Pro Tim. So that's been corrected on the final minutes after.
Okay. So now we're removing, you're just doing a correction. Is there any, Council, nothing? Is there any public comment on any of this?
No public comment.
Okay. Well, no public comment, no comments from council, no removal. Before we give a vote, City Attorney, can you read title by ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The title of the ordinance on item D5 is as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, amending sections 18.10.090, 18.33.050, 18.36.060, 18.39.060, 18.40.060, and 18.56.080 of Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace municipal code to establish design standards for trash enclosures. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So do I have a first and a second on this?
Motion for a first.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Councilman Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item meeting, half unfinished business, done new business. Mayor appoints councils to attend the 2024 annual meeting. The shareholders of Riverside Highland Water Company. Presented by city manager.
Very briefly, every year, the Riverside Highland Water Company has a shareholders meeting. Historically, either the city manager has attended that and voted the shares, or we've signed the proxy back to the water company. However, in a break from tradition, I think it's important that we give the council an opportunity to have a council member or somebody, one of the elected officials, to represent the city's interests at the shareholder meeting rather than staff. So it is up to you to determine, should you like one of you to go, and if so, who we should send.
Okay, does the council have any questions? No? All right. Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor, we do not.
I'll bring you back to discussion. You guys want to nominate somebody or somebody volunteer? Ken, Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recommend Mayor Pro Tim Wilson to represent the city. If you recall, Mayor Pro Tim Wilson had applied for board membership and is, I think, highly qualified to serve the city's best interest, not only in this one-time situation, but as a long-term member of the Riverside Highland Board. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. I'll second that recommendation. Any other questions or comments? No? And nothing, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And how many is in our proxy? I forgot to ask. All right. Well, good luck, and we'll be waiting for your report when you come back. So item seven, update the city council on options to fill the council vacancy presented by the city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Debra Thomas, City Clerk. Our last meeting, council accepted the resignation of Councilmember Sylvia Robles, which was effective March 6. During those discussions, there was a motion made by Councilmember Henderson with a second from Mayor Pro Tim Wilson that we push the vacancy to a special election, but that that special election, they wanted it to be held coinciding with the general election. In follow-up to that, I contacted the registrar or voter's office to have that discussion and their recommendation, based on how they desire to handle the vacancy if a special election is held, is to do an all-male ballot. So first of all, you have your two options under government code 36512. Point your, appoint an individual to fill the vacancy within the 60 days from the date of vacancy, or to hold the special election. That special election must be called by May 5. The next special election date, based on the elections code 5005, is August 27, which is a Tuesday. In addition to that, the city's size allows us to hold a wholly male ballot election only. Therefore, there's, nobody would have to go to a voting center. They could just, their mail ballot, their ballots would be mailed to them, and they would be returned to the county registrar's office as well, and they would be handled at that time on the 27th. If you were to hold a special election after that, instead of using your mail ballot only, you are going to hold an election that's going to vote an individual, and that will be a moot point at that point. They would basically be elected for one day, because the term for this vacancy expires in November. Those three positions that'll be up for election, those are four, or excuse me, three four-year terms. So at this stage, based on the discussions with the county and their recommendation that we do abide by the government code, that we either appoint, that the city council either appoint an individual, which you can appoint somebody of your choosing, or we can go by your guidelines and go through the process by advertising, accepting applications, interviewing, and making a selection. And that would have to be completed by May 5. So with those options, we leave it up to the city council to make their recommendation. And that's my staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions only? City clerk? Do we have any public comment on this?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll bring you back for discussion. You know, does anybody have a discussion they want to bring up on this? Councilman Allen, go ahead.
So this, this reminds me of the discussion we had at the last meeting of our options, either to have a, a point or have a special one, but now we're back to, it looks to me like, or sounds to me like, the simplest option would, is the appointment option, but then we have to decide, do we advertise it and let people run, or do we appoint someone? And then one of the things that I thought about whenever I was thinking about this was in the appointment process, I know that a couple of my fellow council members here mentioned that they were, in our previous discussions here from the dais, that they didn't want to, you know, prejudice a seat by offering someone the temporary or by appointing someone, so that that's why we chose to leave it vacant until, but now we found out we can. But so anyway, my, the reason I brought that up was that recently, our governor had to fill the seat of a deceased Senator Feinstein, and he chose someone who had made it plainly clear that that individual was not interested in running for election, and that was why he chose that individual. So that might be some, something we can add to our discussion here. I just want to throw that out there to you. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, you wanted to say something?
I would support that within 60 days from the commencement of the vacancy, we fill the vacancy by appointment. I would like to open up this item for discussion amongst my peers here. Will we include some kind of a interview process in that appointment?
Councilman Henderson?
I think we should appoint, I think we should invite applications from interested citizens, and I think we should interview. I also think that the questions that have been used by the city clerk and the city council in the past, when appointments have been considered, be reviewed by council with the idea that maybe some of the questions will be amended or reflect the current environment for the city of Grand Terrace.
Okay. Well, here's something out of the box, I'm thinking, and something almost what Councilman Allen said, and, you know, I'm all for appointing. I mean, my first time was appointed, and then, you know, because the Mayor Pro Tim beat me out by, what, 89 votes? But I didn't hold anything against him. I still remind him of that. He's the only person that beat me, so. But anyway, and you see on the appointment process, the people who are putting a dedication in and who's, that's the thing, is the council looks for people who's going to, you know, do the job and not just chase the title and for their own good. But thinking about stuff like our past council members, who we have, the experience that we have, and there is one individual that I think the city owes an apology to that should be appointed, and if the opportunity was given to him, to come in and serve the rest of the term and, and to lead the city, I don't want to say his style, because this gentleman has worked hard for the city, and he has done a good thing for the city, and he's also was a gentleman who named the Veterans Freedom Park. And I would like to see that individual come back here and serve the rest of the council, and I don't think he'll be running for it, but I think the city will do it just by correcting a wrong that was given to this individual. And that's just, you know, what's been on my heart. I know there's people out here that can do the job and want to do the job, but then again, I don't want to hear, oh, the council favored this one person because that person's running. But I think if we could ask that individual if he would take the request on honoring us by serving on the council for the, till November, I think it would do the city good and do that individual good and bring him the just that he deserves. Do you guys any open for that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think the first thing we'd want to know is who we're talking about.
Okay, well, can I talk about the individual? Conrad, can you tell them who?
Yes, you can.
Okay, well, that individual, who's done a lot for the city, and who still did a lot for the city even after getting let go from the city, has never had hard feelings and has continued to do everything he can. Of course, he is a Marine, so as Marines, we always keep going, but I would like to bring Jim Miller back until the end of the year and have him serve on the council, if Jim Miller would like to come back. I think the city will owe him, they owe him that. And I'm not going to go into the past or anything, that's for other people, but everybody in the council knows what happened, and it was wrong, and he's a good guy, and he's what the city needed back then, and I think this would be a good way to fill it for the other people who are running and give them opportunity. Councilman Allen?
Has anybody had an opportunity to approach Mr. Miller about this?
No, I haven't. It was just something that I've been praying on and it came to my heart.
Well, you're not the only individual behind this dais that admires Mr. Miller and thinks highly of him and his service to this community, his whole family, in fact. I just believe that it would, I just think somebody should reach out to him or Ms. Miller and see if he would be amenable to that, that, that offer. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly, you know, open to that discussion, very open to that discussion.
But we have enough time, City Clerk? If we brought it to and asked Mr. Miller and then come back, are we on to do our advertisement by March 27th if Mr. Miller declines?
We could hold a special meeting if, if need be.
Can we do that?
And we could, to push, push the date timeline out a little bit.
Yes, we want to give Mr. Miller the opportunity to, to either say yes or no, but I'm just one person on this council that has, and that'd be, Councilman Henderson?
I think Mr. Miller would be an excellent addition to the city council, and I would support that, assuming that health permitting on Mr. Miller's part. So I think that's part of the discussion that the council representative would have with Mr. Miller and his wife.
Yes, by all means. Mayor Pro Tim, your thoughts?
I agree, have the same reservations as, as Councilmember Henderson has. It, symbolically, it's absolutely appropriate. Bottom line is, is if he can do it and function in it, then that's going to be his decision.
Yes, it'll be his decision overall and his family's. So are you guys in agreeance that we come back for a special meeting and we reach out to Mr. Miller? Can we do that, Debra? Or City Attorney, can we do that?
What my suggestion would be is you could give us a deadline on when we reach out to Mr. Miller, have him make his decision, and if that decision is no, can we just proceed then with the direction of appointment via interview?
So have an alternative, just in case he says no, then just move forward to the point it?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, and let me just add that I can think of probably right now, I can, on one hand, count five former council members still residing in the city of Grand Terrace that would also, if Mr. Miller is not in a position, you know, where he's able to, there's several others in the city that were very competent and served well, that might be willing to step up for just a few weeks.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, well, yeah, we got a lot of experience out there in what they did, but I think the city owes it to Mr. Miller. We definitely owe it to him. So can we do that, then reach out to him if he, and where we find out, then we, if he says yes or no, then we could just move forward with the appointment? Is that all right with everybody?
Maybe have a deadline by the end of the week, or?
Yeah. Is that fine?
Yes. I, I guess my only question would be, so our next meeting would, our next regular meeting is what, April, sorry, I'm going to bring up my calendar, April 9? So I guess we would report back on April 9 if he's agreeable to serving and/or to update the council as to, no, he's not interested in serving, but you have sent out the notification for interest?
We could do that, and then maybe what we could do is, is interview on the, if he is, chooses not to proceed with that direction, then we could interview and swear in on the same day, the appointee on the 23rd.
On the 23rd, yeah.
We can, that's been done before.
Yeah. That way, we're not holding a special meeting just for...
No, that's perfect. We've interviewed and sworn in and tell them to bring their families just in case they get picked and...
And then we have some extra time.
If Mr. Miller doesn't take it, yeah, that's a good idea. And you guys agree on that?
I believe we have a consensus, Mayor.
Mr. Henderson, Councilman Allen? Okay. So the motion would be to have a meeting with Mr. Miller to see if he's willing physically, and if he wants to, you know, be our next council member. If Mr. Miller declines, which, you know, we respect his decision, then we'll go ahead and do the interview process, and then we'll do the swearing in on April 23. Correct? So that's my motion. Do I have a, do I, do I need anything else either?
No, my only question is who will be reaching out to him? Would it be the city clerk or city manager?
Well, the city manager will reach out to him. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henderson, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, where are we? Item eight, presentation overview of the conditional use permit process of the city Grand Terrace per Title 18, Chapter, Title 18, Chapter 18.83, conditional use permit, presented by Scott Hunter, Planning and Development Service Director. All right, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable members of the...
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council. Uh, this is a informational report tonight. I'm going to summarize the agenda staff report, which you have in your agenda packets. Uh, I gotta, of course, recognize Assistant Planner Antonio Lopez, who put this together for us. And overall, this is to address kind of the overall conditional use permit process that the city has in its municipal code. For the benefit of the council and the public, the conditional use permit is known as a CUP for short. And it's a permit that allows the city to regulate certain land uses by adding conditions to ensure that the land use is compatible with surrounding businesses, residential homes, and developments. Those conditions are imposed, so there's no negative impacts occurring to surrounding businesses, homes, and adjacent sensitive uses and receptors. The zoning code for the city, which is Title eighteen in the municipal code, it establishes different zones in which different types of land uses or businesses are, are permitted. Known as a capital P in the, um, or they're conditionally permitted, known as a C. If they have the C next to the business type, then they require the conditional use permit. And that's true for all the land uses in the municipal code. Staff has a land use matrix that we put together that kind of extracted all those land uses and let you know if they require the conditional use permit or if they're permitted by right. And we included that as an exhibit number two to your staff report. It's kind of a cheat sheet through the code to make it easier to visualize. The actual Grand Terrace Municipal Code does go into depth regarding conditional use permits. And we've also provided that as exhibit three. But in short, the planning commission has the ultimate authority to issue, to revoke all conditional use permits and to ensure that the city's health, safety, and welfare are met by reviewing those conditional use permits and ensuring that there's no objectable or undesirable effects that are created through the land use that's being permitted. The conditional use permits are processed through my department, which is Planning and Development Services. It will receive an application. And that'll be scheduled ultimately for a duly noticed public hearing for consideration by the city's planning commission at a public meeting. During that process, the planning commission does have the authority to impose upon that use permit, conditions of approval. Typically, there'll be conditions that are going to be addressing things such as security, things that address controlling noise. It could be vibration, odors, maybe dangerous, or, or elements and activities or uses that could have negative impacts on surrounding businesses or homes. It can limit hours of operation. Those are typically the things you'll see that'll be tailored within those conditions of that use permit for that land use. The planning commission ultimately would, uh, say approve the conditional use permit only if it meets very specific findings of fact. So in the municipal code, you have to ensure that you just don't approve a conditional use permit. It has to be consistent with the zoning code, consistent with the general plan. Has to not be any kind of detriment to health, safety, comfort, general welfare of persons residing in the city or working. It can't be injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood within the city and so on and so forth. And those types of findings are included in any staff report for a use permit that would go before the planning commission. Ultimately, if a conditional use permit is obtained by a, a business or a land use, it can always be revised or modified. And typically, there's two paths that that can occur. One way can be modified as a request by the actual applicant itself. Uh, should they grow, for instance, a restaurant may enlarge into an adjacent suite. And because of that, their CUP would have to be updated to reflect the additional square footage and the growth of the business. Um, or it could be, um, self, um, city started, meaning the planning commission or staff has the authority to periodically bring up a use permit. And it can be taken to the planning commission for a review to ensure that the use permit in the business is being operated in a manner which is not a detriment to the public health, safety, and welfare. And it's not being injurious to any properties in the vicinity. Ultimately, after that review, um, of any conditional use permit, whether it's started by the actual applicant or by the city, if the planning commission deems that there is sufficient evidence to warrant a full examination of the use permit, then that review will be forwarded to a actual duly noticed public hearing date before the planning commission. And that'll be set by the commission itself. And at that future public hearing date, the planning commission may actually modify or actually revoke a conditional use permit. Regarding the revocation of a conditional use permit, the, um, that's already been granted. It can only be revoked if very specific following, like actions can occur and can be made findings for, such as a violation of the conditional use permits required conditions of approval. Something within that conditional use permit was, um, not adhered to by the, um, the holder of that use permit. Or such as any kind of federal, state, or local law ordinance that has been documented as being violated in connection with that conditionally permitted use. Ultimately, a hearing by the planning commission is necessary for any kind of proposed revocation action that could occur for a conditional use permit. Uh, that concludes my brief overview of the staff report item for conditional use permits from sort of start to finish. And I'm available for any questions that the city council or the public may have.
City Council have, Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Appreciate your report. I have a question regarding, um, the conditions of approval. Are they all weighted the same? Can, can a, um, request for a hearing on potential revocation, uh, be submitted and approved for a relatively, and I use that term, uh, minor condition as opposed to something that might be considered a major condition of approval? Is there distinction made at all in that process?
They're all weighted the same, is my understanding.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for that report. Um, how will the planning commission go about obtaining the information they need? I know you said a public hearing, okay, but that's pretty, a little bit more narrowed down or how will they obtain that information to see if the conditions for use are being met or violated or that sort of thing?
That would definitely fall upon the responsibility of my department. So myself and my team, possibly in collaboration with code enforcement or other agencies, would be responsible for providing the analysis and documentation for the planning commission's consideration. And we would give them a, a recommendation.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim, do you have a question?
No further comment.
Okay, uh, I have any, I don't have a question. So open a public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Not on this item.
All right, so we have no public comment. This is just a presentation. Are we voting on this?
Uh, motion to receive and file.
Okay, so, this will receive and file?
So moved.
So we don't need to vote on that, right?
Usually I recommend it, not required by-
I gotta push that button again?
I love it when you guys press buttons.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, a second by Mayor Pro Tim, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item nine, council member requests for property located at twenty-two, three-twenty-five Barton Road. Presented by Scott Hunter, Planning and Development Service Director.
Again, thank you, Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council and the public in attendance tonight. Uh, this item is a report out to you on the conditional use permit for the property located at two-two-three-two-five Barton Road. Um, city staff was able to look at the archives for the property. And it revealed it and showed that there's been a conditional use permit at that location that has been running with the land from nineteen eighty-five to present. Specifically, it's conditional use permit eighty-five dash zero-nine. Uh, it was originally approved and authorized by the city for a senior independent living project known as a senior rest home in the old land use table from the nineteen eighties. And that was with no medical care on site. The conditional use permit was necessary that time because the zoning code in nineteen eighty-five was requiring in that table, at that time, a CUP for a rest home use when it was known as the C dash two zone, commercial zone. A conditional use permit had conditions of approval that were included with it in nineteen eighty-five. And I included an original copy of those as attachment one to the agenda report for your reference. Uh, a change occurred in nineteen ninety, when, uh, you may be familiar with the Barton Road specific plan. That was adopted and that changed the overall, uh, established zoning and land uses approved for that particular property because it did fall within the Barton Road specific plan. So the old C dash two zone from nineteen eighty-five went away. It was superseded by the Barton Road specific plan, which has its own planning area and zoning regulation authority over that property now. Uh, looking through the archives, uh, we came to nineteen ninety-six when there was an addendum process for the conditional use permit. The original one from nineteen eighty-five was amended in nineteen ninety-six. It was known as amendment number one. And, um, the report notes that the Barton Road specific plan had become out of alignment with the original land use zoning from nineteen eighty-five. So rest home was no longer listed in the Barton Road specific plan as it was previously in the C dash two zone from nineteen eighty-five. This conditional use permit addendum was approved and introduced a new element to the land use there. So the original rest home use, which had no medical care, changed as this addendum allowed daily medical care assistance on-site via residential care facility for the elderly license from the State Department of Social Services. So that was a change in the original spirit and intent and added additional services to the location that weren't there in nineteen eighty-five. So nineteen ninety-six, we have that change. And this is coinciding with an ownership change of the property as things, um, businesses and operations grow here. A land use question that staff noted in the report that we get to put forth to our planning commission ultimately is how to address this post-rest home land use, these changes that have occurred at the two-two-three-two-five Barton Road under the conditional use permit amendment from nineteen ninety-six to present. Uh, regarding the intensity and scope of uses at this site, they, uh, from what I could tell going through the archives, grew into ultimately an assisted living memory care community that provided assisting living for seniors with memory issues. And ultimately, it grew into a use which provides mental health services and programming to help people eighteen and older to learn independent living skills. So these operation changes are again, um, more intensification and changes to the original land use, which was a rest home with no medical care in nineteen eighty-five. As you can see, I've tried to document the overall creep and changes as this has gone on in time to bringing new programs and care and services to a broader range of individuals than previous business operations had provided on the site. There appears to be no action taken by the planning commission over that timeframe to determine any land use at that location, two-two-three-two-five Barton Road. Ultimately, as I mentioned in the staff report, it's key to point out that a conditional use permit authorizes a specific use pursuant to like a land use table. It can authorize any kind of land use that, for instance, the Barton Road specific plan does not authorize in the land use matrix. Nor any land use not expressly authorized by the conditional use permit itself. So it is prudent to review the conditional use permit with our city planning commission to ensure that the current land use or uses at two-two-three-two-five Barton Road are consistent with what the original conditional use permit authorized or the addendum, uh, conditional use permit from nineteen ninety-six. It is within the planning commission's authority to review, uh, any and all allegations about nonconformities or nonconforming land uses that may be occurring at two-two-three-two-five Barton Road. And through the planning commission review process, if directed by the city council, the city can review if in fact, nonconforming activities are occurring and if a conditional use permit needs to be amended. Uh, staff recommends that the city council, uh, review, uh, refer this land use matter to the planning commission. And, um, overall workload and just for transparency, given the projects we have lined up right now, it looks like about six to eight weeks, we, lead time, we would need to put this together to do the research and analysis and to get the recommendation to the planning commission for a full item on that. So that concludes staff's presentation. Available for any commentary questions the city council or the public may have.
So council have any questions? Councilman Henderson?
Thank you for the staff report. It, it's, it's, um, for a neophyte like me, it's a little difficult to follow, but I, I believe I got the gist of it. My specific question is, did the use become existing nonconforming when the Barton Road specific plan was adopted in nineteen ninety? And if so, uh, what is your understanding of whether or not the specific plan addressed that existing nonconforming use in some form or fashion?
Yeah, to answer your question on the nonconforming aspect, that is touched upon in the attachment two to the staff report tonight. Uh, the, the nineteen ninety-six addendum does go into detail on the rest home no longer being consistent with the Barton Road specific plan. And that's from the nineteen ninety-six report. So at least at that point in time, there was inconsistencies with the zoning. I think that's an important thing for us to look into with the planning commission today to take a close look at what the current land use activities are and to have them look at that and determine, is it consistent or not consistent, conforming, nonconforming?
My, my second question is, it appears that each owner slash applicant came to the planning commission and received approval for these uses that may or may not be in conformance with the Barton Road specific plan. Is that an accurate statement?
I think up until nineteen ninety-six was as far as I could trace planning commission action on the uses at the location. Um, post nineteen ninety-six, it appears that the conditional use permit was just rolling over along with business license and any kind of, um, zoning determinations at a staff level for the location.
Thank you for that. Correct me if I'm wrong. I was under the impression that the current user, operator, had sought approval from the planning commission for the current use. Am I in error in that regard?
I'm not aware of that occurring.
They did not go to planning commission.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, uh, public comment?
Karen Proctor.
Thank you, Mayor and the city council. I am coming here as a citizen. Um, I, my background is in a, uh, retired patients' rights advocate for the Department of Behavioral Health for San Bernardino County. And I'm really concerned about the, um, facility, the mental health facility that is in this, um, city. First of all, I'd like to say that it is a licensed by the State of California facility. It is also, um, contracted with the County of San Bernardino, Department of Behavioral Health. I just retired a year, almost a year ago, exactly a year ago. So I'm here as a citizen, not representing the county. I have to really emphasize that because they would probably not be happy. Anyway, I just want to say that, um, this is a licensed residential facility for people who may have mental disability. And those people, as a general rule, I had twelve years of experience working for behavioral health. These people, as a rule, are not dangerous. They are more likely to be victims than perpetrators. So when we look at this and thinking about denying this place the conditional, um, use permit, I really strongly suggest that you look at that. Look at the, the state and how the, um, the county is also, um, governing it or looking, you know, they have a, they have their, um, I forget the word. Anyway, I'm sorry. Anyway, I do appreciate your listening to me and I hope that you take in consideration that this place needs to be here. And the mentally ill are not a threat to this city. Not at all. And I've worked with them. I did the, when they come in on a fifty-one fifty, those are the ones that I dealt with. Now, those could be, but these people are already stabilized before they come here. So keep that in mind, please, when you make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Albert Guerra?
While the next speaker is coming up, um, I just want to clarify for, for the public that, and I apologize, Mayor, if, okay, I speak. I just want to clarify for, for the public that, and I apologize, Mayor, if okay I speak. Is the only issue that is before the council tonight is whether, based on the, the statements at public comment during the last few months, whether the council wants to refer the matter to the planning commission to look into, the allegations that have been made and look into the CUP. The council tonight is not making a decision to approve a CUP, to deny a CUP, to revoke a CUP, anything of the sort. They're just looking into whether they want to, based on the comments that have been made, whether they want to refer it to the planning commission for review. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, city council members. Real quick, I understand that that's what we're voting on kicking to planning commission. I just want to say a few things. One, J.C. Wallace House is a for-profit organization. They get, they get the money from the state, from private investors, whatever they do. But it is their always best interest to have a full bed capacity. With that being said, the, I spent 14 years, I guess, in special education classes and other things. I have reading rights, as I said, also I'm autistic. So, I got to see firsthand what a state-funded facility does. Also, my brother is, which is also J.C. Wallace's other thing, it's not only mental health, but it's also drug addiction is also counted as mental health. My brother's addicted to drugs. I watched him destroy my family and our community several times going into level-two centers like this, coming out usually worse off than he went in because they never gave help that often because, again, they are a for-profit organization. If people need help, give them help. But the problem is, our very small 15,000-member community is asking, they're asking us to kind of take the brunt of all this. And I don't think that the city should have to deal with this. And if it could go back to planning commission and then actually go from there, I, I think a city with a, with better resources would be better allocation for that. And like I said, I, I grew up in special classes in mental health facilities, not mental health facilities, special education and state-funded programs to get over my mental deficiencies. And like I said, my brother, I've, I watched him destroy my neighborhood and family just because these rehab centers don't actually rehab. I understand you're in the revolving door, but it, it, they don't have, we don't have the resources, they don't offer the resources to kind of deal with that kind of thing because, at the end of the day, a for-profit facility is, at the end of the, to get money. And they get money for every bed and they have 135 beds there. And they also have 13 different job postings on 16 different sites, getting, trying to get more people. Then, they also offer very low pay for all positions available. But like I said, I really hope we do kick this back to planning commission and then we could go from there. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Hossi. Good evening, council. About a month ago, we had the meeting having to do with the Wallace House here and the people were here speaking their, how they felt. We were, my wife and I were here also. The reason I'm here is because I just want to report to the council, and this is just regarding my wife and I myself and what we have seen. We're very happy to say that since then, there's been some changes. We have been at, we live at the Donut House. And we also do shopping at the outlet and we also do shopping at the Dollar Tree. And we have noticed a complete turnover. There have not been the people that they say from the Wallace House. We have not seen anybody there. Now, I can't speak for other people, but for my wife and I, we are very impressed. Someone at the Wallace House is doing their job, or people are doing their job because they are no longer around the Donut House. And even the owner, Nick, and I asked him, Nick, have you noticed I'm seeing these people here anymore? He says, no, they're like gone. So, I felt that you should know that someone there is doing their job and I guess they're willing to work on helping with the problem that they had. So, what you guys do with this, council and the planning commission, that's going to be up to you. But I just felt that you should know that someone there is doing their job. So, positive things for, you know, for them and hopefully, this problem will be resolved and you guys will make the right decision for the best for the community of Grand Terrace. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. I'm on the streets of Grand Terrace after 1:00 in the afternoon until about 11:00 PM typically. So, I know Mr. Flores is an early bird because he's at the donut shop. I have videos, I have a video from yesterday of one of the residents crossing in the middle of traffic in front of Woody's, not going to the light and then going down the driveway to the J.C. Wallace House. I have not had anybody knock on my window because I'm avoiding the parking lot of the donut shop and the grocery outlet because of my three incidences there. They may be doing better, but I expect that will be temporary and I would appreciate it if you would still review this and send it to the planning department. If they're doing something, it's a Band-Aid. I really respect you for speaking. Thank you for sharing your story of your family. This is bad for our community. I do agree that people need help, but I think that they should be in a location where there are things for them to do besides walk to grocery outlet and Dollar Tree. There should be places for them to entertain themselves, be able to go to doctor's appointments, be able to go to a movie, be able to function in life. They're not learning anything walking the streets of Grand Terrace. What is there to learn? All there is to do is come out and spend money here. They don't have children here. They're not at our parks. They're not participating in soccer or baseball. I believe that people need help, but I don't think this location in our community is the place for this facility to be. And I appreciate anything that you can do to have this reviewed. And also, I'd like to say, I had to message A.J. to get the volume turned up on the speaker because I could not hear the planning director speak. I tried very hard and my hearing is very good, but I could hardly understand what he was saying. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Warren.
Mr. Mayor and the Grand Terrace City Council, I'm the owner of the Professional Building on Barton Road by the Bank America, next to the Jackson property. And over the last three to five months, we've had horrendous problems. I've owned that property for 25 years and we've had more problems in the last two, three months than we've had in the last 25 years together. I love Grand Terrace. My children grew up here. I came here in 1968 and been in Grand Terrace or within a mile or two lived for the last 55 years. And Grand Terrace was really outstanding place. I remember in, in Money Magazine, Grand Terrace was one of the top 20 places to live in, in the world. And the deterioration, the degradation that's happened on Barton Road and at the Grand Terrace Professional Building has been horrendous. About three weeks ago, the fence was cut, the six-foot chain link fence was cut between the property, Jackson property and the Grand Terrace Professional Building. We've had feces and we'd have urine. Someone broke into the mailroom and we've had panhandlers that have been out in the parking lot. And what this has done is deteriorated the value of the property. The tenants are somewhat scared to be there and it certainly is not becoming to new tenants to feel that. I understand the Jackson property was, zoning was changed because it wasn't profitable to have the nursing home and the assisted living. Well, if I said the same thing happened with the Grand Terrace Professional Building, wanted to get less desirable tenants in there just to have a cash flow, I, I don't think that's right. I never was notified that there was any change of the zoning whatsoever. There have been zone changes across the street where they've put in a fitness gym or something very minor and something that's very attractive to the community, but something is major. I never received a notice. And I think we need to look at this. I have loved Grand Terrace and have a huge investment in here. I've contributed to the city. Just a month ago, we let you use a Blue Mountain for Blue Mountain Days, have given rabies clinics and contributed to the Grand Terrace Foundation with the funds that I had from the rabies clinics and have really been an active part of the community. But something needs to be done. And I challenge you, number one, why did this happen in the first place? And second of all, what are you going to do to make Grand Terrace great again? Grand Terrace should be one of the top 100 cities in America like it was 20 years ago. I thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I would just like to bring up something that I haven't heard talk about yet. So, the city of Tulare is dealing with the same issue with the same company, the Alamo Senior Living. They're trying to change a building up there to the J.C. Wallace House. It's the same lady who was here the other day speaking about J.C. Wallace House. The city of Tulare has stopped the change on it. And the whole city, which is much larger than the city of Grand Terrace, was involved in the planning process. And I don't understand why our residents weren't involved or like why the city members can't have the opportunity to review this. It, it makes no sense for such a large city like Tulare to put the brakes on a house like this where the city of Grand Terrace, which is so small. And the other day, there were several citizens here speaking about the importance of this change. I think that the citizens of Grand Terrace deserve the planning committee's review on this instance. So, I would like to really express my, my emotions towards the detriment that this building is doing to our city. I know that someone came up here and said that there has been positive change. I contacted the J.C. Wallace House just last week because my daughter was at the dance studio and there was, which is right across the street, and a gentleman was running towards the studio and all the girls ran inside. I, I called J.C. Wallace House. I never got a call back. I didn't go to the actual facility that night because it was late at night and I didn't have the time. I'm still waiting for a call back. The night that the lady was here, I asked for her business card. That way, if we do have some type of problem, we can, you know, get to her. She said she'd be open to share her information with us. She said her assistant would get back to me. Assistant didn't get back to me. I called the next day. The assistant said she would come to my house to drop off a business card. I said, I'll, I'll go to the business and pick it up. She said she'll let me know when she's available. I, I don't think that the transparency that was presented to us that night stood through in all instances and I don't think that it's fair. So, I would really hope that you guys think through the conditional permit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. Thank you for your time. I just, just a couple of things to consider. I'm not super informed about all the, you know, the way these things go, but is the conditions of use permit specific enough to control this type of situation that we have for that specific facility? I mean, I'm sure it's like on a broader scale, so I'm just not sure if it is able to do that. And also, I'm just curious, and I know you're not going to answer questions, but there's like San Bernardino, Riverside, Highland, these huge cities. Why Grand Terrace, such a small city where it's impacted the most for this type of facility? And I'm not against healthcare or mental health care, any of that. I'm super for it, but I don't think they're getting the help they need when we have, you know, we're being approached three or four times in an hour walk in our small city. It's just something to consider. I don't know if it's specific enough. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am, for those questions.
Good evening, Mayor and council. On February 27th, when J.C. Wallace House gave their presentation, they stated that they had an 80% success rate. They had 80% successful outcomes. The numbers that they gave us were beyond 100% with, with the numbers that they reported. In those numbers, they also stated that 28% transitioned back to higher-level care, which meant that whoever was making these referrals, whether it be a facility or a physician who was making those recommendations and sending them over, they were bad recommendations. Or, the staff onsite, their validity and reliability of their assessment process at intake was not appropriate. So, somewhere there's a breakdown in their process there to where 30% should not be there. It is public knowledge also that the owner stated that none of the residents at the facility were not registered sex offenders. However, there is documentation that there was a sexual assault in the facility. The people there are to be learning to be independent, to go back out and live independently on their own or with, you know, minor support. However, they are out in the streets independently, absent of those skills having been acquired. I'm a speech-language pathologist. I've been practicing for almost 20 years now, maybe, maybe more. The work that I've done with people who required social pragmatic skills and being able to interact in everyday interactions out in the community, we ran community services. We ran those sessions so that way they understood how to cross the street, how to interact when ordering at a restaurant or being able to make a purchase at a location. And so, those supports were in place. That, that's not something that's happening at this residential facility. And so, I implore you all to take that into consideration that 30% of those people who are with them should have some kind of medical support, which then goes against the current conditional use permit that's in place. And to also share the public comment with the planning commission so they're aware of the actual reported issues that have been coming to the council and the concerns that we have. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'm a resident of Grand Terrace. I was just trying to figure out.
Sir, can you pick up the mic? There you go.
How about now? Just trying to find out what the zonings are, if anything's getting changed because right down on the corner of Mount Vernon, near Barton Road by the CVS, there's a vacant house that Fumi used to live in. And there was vagrants out there sleeping there. I ran them off, was going to cut the grass, try to make it look a little bit presentable. Thursday, when I went to go do that, there was a gentleman with a pocket on his truck. He said he was doing an abatement because the city was going to get, the house was getting torn down. So, is something going on? Are you guys going to rezone or what? I'm just curious because there's nothing coming up on ZIL on that house anymore.
Sir, that's a whole different issue. If you're talking about the vacant house?
Uh huh.
Yeah, that's a different issue. From this issue. Right now, we're just talking about J.C. Wallace and the CUP. That issue, we, the city manager could get back with you about that. Because I don't know anything about that zone. I don't know anything about that house. So, right now, your, your statement, your public comments is, is for the J.C. Wallace CUP.
Okay, I thought it was just an open mic.
That, that would be on a public comment, an overall issue. But I'll have the city, we'll get your information. I'll have the city manager give you a call if we're having issues with that abandoned house. Is that your question?
Yeah.
Is that your concern?
Yeah.
No, I understand your concern if they're having vagrants living there and stuff, but right now, we're just talking about the J.C. Wallace House and see if we're going to move forward on the CUP review.
Okay, and that's going to be a bit.
Okay. We'll reach out to you, sir. Thank you.
Sean Nichols. Sean Nichols.
All right, good evening. Bless you guys, thank you for what you guys do for us. Just wanted it to be heard, it sounded like, if I heard correctly with the, with the, I can't remember this guy's position, but that if I was following the ears and stuff, that nobody ever presented anything about this particular facility being what this facility is and doing what it's doing. So that kind of sounds like a no-brainer to me. And then in relationship to the, to like my family, like my mom, she'd be walking all over the place, and I have, I really feel like I don't have a whole lot to say, because if anything, I was, I was part of one of the problems in society for a long time, and if it wasn't for God working in my life and changing my life, I've been in a lot of institutions like this guy said, and a lot of the state-funded institutions didn't do anything to help me. It was something that needed to psychologically happen through. And, and, and so I just, I just wanted to say that it really bothers me, like when I walk around, I can see what's happening, and like this gentleman talking about people cutting through the fence and what's going on, it's like, I understand we have to help people, because I was one of those people who needed help, but at the same time, this city, man, I've been here ever since I was a kid, there's like five generations of us been living in this city. And I'm grateful that this has always been a safe place to come back to, but with what's been happening, and like my mom, and my daughter, and my wife trying to walk around, it seems like that is changing. And it seems like, and I don't know disrespect, but if I heard correctly, automatically right there, that, that puts the thing on the table to absolutely be dealt with, because nobody, you guys didn't even know, it sounds like. Sounds like they didn't even bring the information to let you guys know what they were planning on doing. And that right there is automatic. I mean, if I tried to go build, I built houses, and we do a lot of remodels, if I were to try to build something without you guys knowing, you guys would shut us down like that. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on?
No more public comments, sir.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and deliberation and what we want to do with this item. Mayor Protem?
I would like to, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the staff recommendation and that this be, this matter be remanded to the planning commission for review.
I'll second that, second.
Okay, so we have a motion to move forward the item by the Mayor Protem and a second by Councilmember Allen. So in discussion of this, I know the council can't make any decisions, yea or nay, this is just to move the item forward so we do further investigations on it. And I, and then like I said, like Scott said, it's going to be 68 weeks out where they get their documentation. I recommend that the residents attend the planning commission meetings and voice their opinion there. And one thing on a side note, this gentleman here, there, we do have issues with the homeless encampments and stuff here, and if you do see something, because like I saw somebody else, a lady walking in the middle of Barton Road, and she was not from the Wallace House, I could tell, but it was a danger to traffic, please call 911. Don't confront them. If you're not getting any things from the Wallace House, if children are in danger, call 911. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do you have any other things? City Attorney, do you have anything else to add?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the recommendation made by Mayor Protem Wilson. I just want to emphasize that whatever that the, the report from the planning commission also indicate how the use, the current use with J.C. Wallace was approved by, by the city. Thank you.
Okay. Let's go ahead and please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close item nine. And future agenda items, at this time, the city council may propose items of discussion and interactions, future duly agenda items, city, city council meetings and consequences of the majority, consensus of the majority quorum is required to place the item on future agenda. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Councilmember Henderson?
Yes. I've had the pleasure of having discussions with Ms. Sarah Wilson regarding her request for a resolution adopted by the city council, dealing with recommending a ceasefire in Gaza. And it's important, in my view, for, if the council is going to consider this, for it to be studiously neutral. The resolution read into the record by Ms. Wilson regarding the city of Alhambra is exactly the type of resolution I think we as a council could favorably consider. The focus, of course, the sole purpose would be to hopefully reduce or eliminate the death and destruction that we've all witnessed. Thank you.
So I have a motion, anybody want a second to bring that item?
I'll second.
Give a motion and a second to bring an agenda item that, for a ceasefire recommended by Councilmember Henderson, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Any other future agenda items? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and close item H, city council communication. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have one brief comment. The mayor and I attempted to attend the Chamber of Commerce Business of the Month ceremony. It was on our calendars for 10 o'clock, but it occurred that morning at the regular meeting of the chamber at 8 o'clock. Notwithstanding that, we, we were able to meet with Mike Miller at Woody's, who was the designated Business of the Month, and were able to spend time with him and with some of his clients, and it's an excellent time had by all. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, rest assured, Ken, I was there, I made it. I like the chamber meetings, they're interesting, we learn a lot, and I'd like to encourage the business community and business members and anybody who's interested in the business community in Grand Terrace and seeing how it grows and support this, this community and the city. You know, the chamber is really working hard to, to do that, to grow and represent the business community here in Grand Terrace. So I'd encourage anyone who wants to be a part of that, second Wednesday of every month at Woody's Restaurant at 8:00 a.m., have some free coffee and listen to what's going on in the business community. There's something that I don't, I, so I did attend that, and I'll, but I wanted to also mention that Assembly Bill 1887 was signed on Monday by Governor Gavin Newsom, and what that does is it extends the time allowed for students to apply for financial aid programs. Typically, those financial aid programs, the cutoff date for, for those is April 2, but they've now been extended to May 2, and this takes effect immediately because there was an urgency status applied to the, to the bill. And this, so the FAFSA and the Cal Grant and the Middle Class Scholarship, all of those things, you know, I'd encourage all of the students out there who are looking at financial aid resources, now you have an extra 30 days. And we can also thank the, our, our assembly member, Sabrina Cervantes, was the author of that bill, and so, you know, if she's listening out there, her aides, thank you. And that's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I'll defer my time to the mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. First of all, thank you everybody for coming out tonight and, you know, voicing your concerns and stuff, and I know sometimes it's, it's hard, but let me just do an emphasis about homelessness. So I got with the Mayor Colton, and this is when we have to work together. We had a homeless shelter, actually, encampment underneath the Barton Road Bridge. I don't know when that Barton Road Bridge is going to be tore down, it should have been done years ago, but they're working on it. But Mayor Frank Navarro, I called him because we have a good working relationship we had for decades, and I said, you know, we got to clean it up, it's a, it's a foot over our property line. But I called the sheriff, Lieutenant Lane sent his hope team out there, because we always send the hope team out to make sure we're not just mean and kicking everybody out, but we want to offer resources. We want to offer help. We want to offer a new life. Most of them don't want it. 99% don't want it. So the mayor had to go through, and there was a lot of logistics and four different property owners, but the place is cleaned up. Not saying they're not going to come back, not saying they moved down the road, but, you know, working together with Colton, we got to work together with Colton, we got to work together with Loma Linda, we got to work together with High Grove, our surrounding cities. Because what was said before, and Dr. Sig brought it up, yeah, 23 years ago, this world was a lot different. This whole area was a lot different. I grew up in Fontana, I don't even go down to my old neighborhood. That's how different it is. Things have changed. So what do we do about change? We have to move forward, we have to be the voice, we have to continue the change. If you see something dangerous, like I ran into the lady at the parking lot at grocery outlet, my concern was people, I don't know what she has, but my concern also was her running in traffic and some innocent person getting hurt. You have to call 911. Yes, our limited resources, and maybe one day we'll have more resources, but we have to be proactive. We also have to be cognizant, you know, the Facebook thing's great, but the sheriffs don't respond to Facebook, they respond to the phone call, or they respond to the council members if, if you're having an issue. So please call 911 if it's emergency life or threat and death situation. If you observe something that's out of code, out of ordinary, please call the city manager or reach out to the city, like the house this gentleman's talking about, so we can see what's going on. We want to make sure there's, there's people are in code. We want to make sure vagrants aren't living in the house, we want to make sure the house next to it's safe, that we don't have no fires in there, so we'll send the sheriff's hope team out to check that out. We want to, you know, we're being proactive, and that's the biggest thing. Now, the thing on mental health is, you know, I have a, my wife's got a cousin who's functioning autistic. He didn't fall through the cracks, the family was involved helping him. And we also have homes, there's group homes in Grand Terrace, right around the corner where these young men and women get up and go to work every day. Anywhere you know that. So just don't confront people. If you see a dangerous situation, I mean, that's on you, but just be aware of your surroundings. You know, nine years Marine Corps, 26 years working in the federal prison, and it's a sad day that I'm law enforcement retired and I have to carry off-duty weapon in church to protect people. Things have changed. So just, you know, let's keep Grand Terrace grand, let's keep moving forward, there's hiccups in the road, and, you know, just keep moving forward. And like I said, we're here to work with everybody, this city is not to hide about anything. So, but once again, I just want to thank the mayor, Colton, and our sheriffs, and everybody else who was committed to clean up that homeless encampment. And if you see anything else running around there, I know there's probably some loose dogs that got left, please call us so we can take care of the issues. And congratulations on Woody's for being Business of the Month, you know, and one of my favorite dishes there is a healthy skillet with biscuits and gravy, so, I don't know. You got to cut somewhere. So that's all I have, thank you. City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to thank the, the community for dealing, helping us with Barton Road and dealing with the traffic impacts there at the washout on the far west, east side of Barton Road. We're just about done with that work, we should have another, I don't know, three, four days of that, but there's, as we do some paving, there may be some traffic issues there for a day. We're also doing our annual pavement and sidewalk rehab, so as you're going through the city, you're going to see big chunks of sidewalk, curb and gutter torn up. Right now, we're pouring it back and replacing it. We should start paving Friday and then into next week. It'll probably be mostly along Mount Vernon, but a couple of other places, there's going to be impacts on traffic, there's going to be impacts on getting around, so leave yourself a little time. And please, please work with us for the next couple of weeks as we work to get the infrastructure in the city in a better shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the fire department, sheriff's department have anything to say?
I, I didn't originally, but just want to follow up on one of your comments, and just so that everybody is aware that, that when we have a large displacement of homeless nearby to the city, all that does is force those people that are refusing the help to go elsewhere, you know, a hospital facility or a behavioral health facility, that they, they feel that their, their next best chances are going to be here in the city. So especially this time of year when it's cold, when their camp is now gone and they don't have those, those methods that they rely on, they're going to come into the city. And I, I think that's, may have something to do with why they appear to be a little bit more visible. So bearing that in mind, you know, if there are issues that present public safety risks to people or crimes that are taking place, obviously, we would like a phone call on that. You know, we can get the deputies out and address those people, we'll deal with the criminal aspects first and then go with the behavioral health matters. But, but it is something that we're keenly aware of and will, will be very responsive to once we receive those calls.
Thank you. So item K, close session none, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn, but remember, we're honoring Roy Nix, council member, longtime resident and a veteran. And, you know, prayers and comfort for his family, and, you know, and thank you, Roy, for all the work that you have done, and this meeting's in honor of you. So our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 9, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. Council closed. Good night, God bless.